We'll call for us and then I will call the meeting to order and we'll go through our normal pledge, et cetera. So Ms. Harden?
Alderman Carver.
Here.
Alderman Sistrum.
Here.
Alderman Rupp.
Here.
Alderman Brooks.
Here.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Vaughn.
Here.
All right, thank you. Everyone who's in attendance, I'll call this meeting to order. This is our regular meeting of, yes, of August the 2nd, Tuesday, the first meeting of the month. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance following an invocation by Alderman Sistrum and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Loving God, quiet our thoughts and grant us a calm soul so that we can bring to tonight's work. Help us to put aside polarized positions and to truly listen tonight. Help us to hear with compassionate hearts and to be willing to be changed by what we hear. We pray in your son's name. Amen.
All right, thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here this evening. And as I mentioned, we're going to be having a roll call vote for every vote this evening because we do have absences from being present here at the table. So our first order of business will be to approve the official agenda with consented items. Do we have any changes to the official agenda or the consented items? Alderman Carver.
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Alderman Sistrum.
No, ma'am.
Alderman Rupp.
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks.
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty.
No, ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn.
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, with no changes to the official agenda or the consented items, do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
A motion from Alderman Rupp, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Vaughn. If you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous. I will read the consented items. First is consideration of the minutes of the July 5th, 2022, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the July 15th, 2022, work session of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the July 19th, 2022, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Then, under Mayor's business, we have consideration of the approval of three MOUs related to HB 1353 between the City of Starkville and the MS Department of Finance and Administration for one, Jail King Center, two, Northside Drive Drainage, and three, Main Street Project. Under engineering, we have consideration of accepting the low quotes from H&amp;H Construction and Excavating LLC in the amount of $6,780 for the installation of concrete pavement at 1502 South Montgomery Street. Under fire department, we have request permission for LaShonda Malone to attend the Emergency Services Administrative Professionals Association Conference on September 7th through the 9th, 2022, in Biloxi, Mississippi, with advance costs not to exceed $800, which includes registration, hotel room, meals, and travel. Under HR, we have request authorization to hire Ladrius Jefferson as a maintenance worker in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Two is request authorization to hire Michael Carey as a temporary maintenance worker in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Three is request authorization to transfer Latroyus Johnson from the Sanitation Department to the Street Department as a maintenance worker, too. Four, request approval of the promotion of Preston Newman to the rank of Sergeant in the Starkville Fire Department. Five, request authorization to hire Mary Williams as Capital Projects Manager in the Starkville Utilities Department. And six, request authorization to hire Shakira Clark as a part-time receptionist at City Hall. Under parks, we have consideration to approve the additional quote from Full County Electric for Cornerstone Park Underground Electric in the amount of $5,362.39. Under police, we have consideration for Chief Mark Vallad to attend the Mississippi Chapter of the FBI National Academy's 2022 Summer Training Conference in Gulfport, Mississippi, August the 7th through the 11th, 2022, with advanced travel and registration. B is consideration for Corporal Marvin Hughes to attend the Incident Response to Terrorists bombing training, the trainer course offered by the New Mexico Tech Energetic Materials Research Training Center located in Socorro, New Mexico, from August the 8th through September the 1st, 2022, with all costs to be reimbursed by the Department of Homeland Security. Under sanitation department, we have request authorization to declare a 2012 Mack front loader garbage truck as surplus and advertise for sale and sell to the highest bidder on govdeals.com. Under utilities, we have consideration of an emergency rental of a 300-ton crane in an amount of $8,500 for the installation of the cab's transformer. Due to the weight of the transformer being larger than what city trucks are capable of handling, per Mississippi Code Section 31-7-13 Sub-K, and that an emergency exists such that the delay incident to giving opportunity for two competitive quotes would be detrimental to the interest of the governing authority. Two is request authorization to declare the Electric Division 2005 GMC Sierra Number 18, then number ending in 5188, as surplus into auction on govdeals and authorization to purchase a Ford F-350 vehicle replacement from state contract. And number three is request authorization to accept the quote from Allen Edwards Body Shop for repairs to the Water Division Truck Number 144 in the amount of $5,302.86. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
My pleasure. And it also gives me pleasure to, under announcements and comments, for Mayor's comments, we talk about National Night Out, which is going on right, well, I say right now, six to nine this evening at the Sports Flex. I think they've got all kinds of opportunities for participation. They've got food and games and giveaways of all kinds. So I think this is a wonderful thing for us to do. We do it every year. Chief, is there anything in particular about it that you'd like to share?
A lot of hard work and could not do without the tremendous community support and very thankful from the public sector and local support.
Okay, and there were a number of people who support businesses and people who supported it financially and just by volunteering as well. So I know Corporal Bibbs has worked on it for quite some time now and it's going to be a very successful event. So we're glad it's happening at Parks. And I'm also gonna, I got a briefing from Parks today to say that the youth kickball, this is the final week for that, and softball is wrapping up as well, track and field. Have more participants than they had last year, so that's growing and hopefully will grow every year. Flag football is going to start Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, starting August the 15th. And we wanted to particularly thank MSU Athletics. They had some signings. So then I guess the name, likeness, name, image, and likeness opportunity came out and they came out and signed some autographs for some of the kids that were at some of the events. So the pool is going to be open on the weekends. We've got dog paddle, which is the closing of the pool with using partnership with OCHS for the Humane Society as we close the pool out, and that will be next month. So we've still got a few more, a few more weekends for the pool. And beyond that, I believe that's about it. The lighting is going in for, we're looking for cornerstone as well as the Sports Flex area. So I think we're moving along with our parks. And we're going to get a briefing at the work session next time we meet on the Friday prior to our August the 16th meeting, which should be August the 12th, I guess it is. So that is all from me. Anyone from the board? Alderman Carver, anything for you?
Only thing I have to say is concerning a little league team, is they've got another, get another team going out to Wake Forest because they're going to play their first game Thursday morning around 10:00 a.m. You can find that on the ESPN plus network where we have almost a team a year, every other year. The last few years representing well, so you get a chance starting Thursday. I believe it's the 10U team that you'll see them, you'll see them in the papers next week, through the coming. I use.
Okay, well, that means we are definitely a baseball area, proud of it. So Alderman Sistrum.
Yes, and this is kind of an odd thing to be coming from me because most of y'all know I'm much more of a pacifist than not. But I saw a tweet and a Facebook announcement this morning about, from last night, where the Starkville Police Department participated in an arrest up in Ackerman, Amory, somewhere nearby. We sent a SWAT team, and that just sounds so over the top, you know, when you're not accustomed to that sort of thing. But it's part of the training and the professional behavior that we have from our police department that does put us above and beyond many, many other groups. So if you want to say anything about that, Chief, but I just, I think we forget how much goes into policing. Last week, we had a health emergency that they responded to. This, tonight, today, it's this SWAT team. And the important thing about that is that they were invited to participate with US Marshals and the Sheriff's Office up there. But the most important thing about it is that the arrest occurred without incident. And that is the outcome that we want. We see too many things, too many other places where there's, there is an incident. And so I'm very proud that the arrest was made without incident.
Chief, you want to come brag on your guys at all, or did Alderman Sistrum do it enough for you?
Well, listen, as years as a team leader, it is a quiet service. We, that unit doesn't go in the headlines often. It's a signature when
I don't want them to.
when dangerous people are disarmed and arrested and handled without incident. And that's the mark of success, and they have done it time and time again. So from the negotiating element to the men and women that serve on there, who train ironically on Sunday nights, for those that don't know, that when they hear, you know, gunfire at the end of the airport, that is our team training. They also train in less lethal, and it's their less lethal capabilities that enable them to apprehend people that are going to be a problem for communities. So thank you. I appreciate the kind words for you.
That was it. Thank you.
Alderman Rupp?
Yes, I'm the city's designee on the Starkville Main Street Board and pleased to announce today that that board unanimously supported the downtown Main Street redevelopment program, pledged $100, which will be matched by the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
That was a hundred thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars. Did you just, let's say a hundred?
You said a hundred dollars?
A hundred, a hundred thousand, yeah. So a total of $200,000, and I think that kind of support on their part shows a true belief in the project. So I was happy to see that.
That's great. Well, thank you for sharing that with us and for your leadership on that board. We appreciate it. Alderman Brooks, anything?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Vaughn?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am, when you see the jet line on this flag football?
Uh, hold my notes. Hang on a second. This flag football is August 15th.
August 15th.
And they'll be playing Mondays, Tuesdays, and Saturdays.
And again, I want to thank all of y'all that attended, the ribbon cutting and the street name of my deceased son. I just want to thank all y'all so much because if y'all hadn't went in there, it wouldn't have been a success. And thank you all for lying there to have them to vote for it to happen and his name on the fire truck for a long time. So I just thank y'all so much for attending.
You're very welcome. Glad we could all be there. Okay, so no more board comments. Now's the time for citizen comments. You have three minutes. Anyone can talk about any particular subject to the board. So being timed by Ms. Harden, and she will let us know. So Mr. Turner.
Greetings to the mayor and board. My name is Avon Tunnel Ward Seven to the mayor, to the police chief, to the fire chief. And I'm just a community leader. Um, in the days to come, days ahead, we hoping that school shootings and stuff that is happening everywhere else, eh, do not come here. But if so, lad, we are hoping that we are ready. Code jacking, all of us, that if, obviously, you may get a situation that we all roll. Uh, people have been wanting, where is that Avery that used to be in Smokehouse Building? And we can't see what's on the building, but we would like to know where Avery that is. In, uh, the Nemo Center. A lot of people, we like to have events, and we cannot pay what other people charge. And we would just like to hope to keep what we got at the Nemo Center that we can have receptions and different stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else?
Mayor, my name is Kelly Prather, and I live here in Starkville, have about the last eight years. And thank you for all your service and what you guys do. Thank you, Mark and Chief Yarborough and all our fire department, police department. I just want to mention a couple of things. I've lived all over the country in different communities and different places and times, but I've lived nowhere where we have the tax rate like we have here in Starkville. Our taxes are completely out of hand, and now we're talking about raising taxes again. And I urge you tonight to show restraint, pump the brakes, find another way without continuing to raise taxes on our citizens. We had a COVID tax that you guys raised, and we said we had to do it because there's going to be issues with COVID. We ought to be talking about tonight about a tax decrease and giving that back to us because that's gone, and now I don't think there was a shortage. And then we got money, I believe, from the government to the City of Starkville. What did we do with all that COVID money? So we got all kinds of construction going on in South Montgomery. We got Oakvale, we got Adelaide, the Catania Park. I'm not sure. Is Catania Park in the City of Jeffrey or not? In the city. We have all, it's not in, not in the city. Okay. All right, so Catania Park may not be. We got all these new things going on in our city. And we need to support our fire department and our police department. We got to find another way to do it without putting it on the citizens continuing to have among the highest taxes around here in Starkville. So I urge you just to try to show restraint and find another way. And here we have our school boards ready to do the same thing. They want to raise taxes. Y'all don't have anything to do with school board. I get that. I understand that.
But they're not raising taxes either.
Well, it was written up that they wanted to do that.
I'm sorry. I normally don't engage, but I just do want to let you know that they're not raising taxes.
That's what they want to do, and they need to find a better way, too, if that's their plan because we have thousands of students that don't even go in the public school system. And they need to figure out how to manage their money better. So we have a great community in Starkville. We appreciate your leadership and what you're doing for our city. But we have to find another way without always just figuring out, let's just raise the taxes again. Let's find another way. And I think you guys can do it if you work hard at it for our community. Thank you for your service and what you do.
And let me say that, I'm sorry, I'm just going to go ahead and say because I talked to the board president and he said that they are not raising taxes, that the way that that restructuring in the paper was a bit misleading, but they are not planning on raising taxes for the school districts.
Well, that will be good. That will be good.
Hi, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Carver, Alderman Carver, is that you?
Uh, just taking, taking notes. What was that just folks?
That was Mr. Prather.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, anyone else? Anyone else?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor and the board, City Board of Alderman. My name is Lakeela Brooks and I am a citizen of Starkville. I came before you today because I was trying to get a incident report from one of your receptionists on yesterday. I had a fall on Wednesday, July 27th, up here by one of your benches. And I just wanted the incident report, but for some reason I couldn't get it. She said that no one seen me fall, and they instructed me to go across the street to town and campus because they were the one that helped me off the ground and see what they give me a write-up. But I told them that I would try. But I feel like I just need an incident report for my own personal use, my own personal records. So is there any way that I may be able to get an incident report?
Well, Ms. Brooks, I've never heard of such a thing. Was it, were the police called?
No, the police wasn't called.
If you want to write something up yourself, if you would do that, then, and you'd like to submit it to the insurance department? Uh, to our insurance carrier?
Well, I just really wanted a statement that I felt up here. If anybody come and follow, or one of your employees fall, will you all do an incident report?
I tell you what, let me, let me, let's take this offline, okay? After the board meeting, we'll talk to you about that, okay? Or we'll get in touch with you.
That'll be, you'll give me a call?
Give me your phone number.
It is 662-312-9355.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I thank you. I appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and board. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you all for leaving.
Identify yourself for the record, please, Mr. Tolliver.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I apologize. I don't come up here much. My name is John Tolliver, Ward 6. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank you all for not pushing over the park over here in Nemo. I would like to thank you for that. Oh, but the other thing I really wish that I didn't, that I would have had another avenue to come with is that four, four-plus years ago, I was told I could not get a raise of my 20th year. Thank you, sir. Of my 20th year, because there was a study and the HR director told me that I could not get the raise because of the study. There's nowhere to implicate that unless there is a study that, that I'm disqualified for that. Since this time, my insurance has gone up, premiums have gone up. Since this time, I've had to, I've had $75 a pay period taken out of my check. Since this time, I've had, well, food has gone up for everyone. Since this time, gas and utilities have, have gone up. Now, I realize you say, well, this is so late. Had I came across the information before now, I would have brought it to you before now. But I'm thinking that, well, I know that you can do something about this mishap, and I'm hoping that you will. And I'm going to go ahead and thank you in advance for doing it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Tolliver. Anyone else? Citizen comments? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close it as citizen comments. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I will close it as citizens' comments, and we will go to the first public hearing on the 2022-2023 Budget and Tax Billings for the City of Starkville. This is our first public hearing. Before I do that, we probably have to have a little bit on the record from our budget chair just to fluff out the record and fulfill the statute according to Mr. Lattimer. So if you would, Alderman Sistrum?
Certainly. We had a very full-throated, lively discussion Friday at the work session about the budget. And so anybody who wants to take a deeper dive into the budget, I would recommend that you go online and look at the video. Go to the tape. So we've done that. Tonight, what I want to do is I want to focus on just a couple of things and address a couple of points that came up during Friday's meeting. But I'd like to walk y'all through the process of how we develop a budget and, and some of the numbers that come out of that process. So the very first thing we do is, and I say we, actually Lisa Harden and Webb Corbin in the city clerk's office are the ones who do the work. But the very first thing that happens is they get with the HR department, and we have a list of everybody who works for the City of Starkville and any vacant positions in the City of Starkville. And the very first thing we do is budget to pay for people, assuming that the positions will all be filled throughout the year. We budget for their benefits, health insurance. We budget for PERS, Social Security, workers' comp, all that sort of thing. That, that alone is roughly 55% of our general fund budget. And I'm going to talk about general fund budget because that's the one that your property taxes support. So, so the very first thing we do is that. The next thing that we have to cover are those things for which we are contractually obligated. That would be everything from debt service to any contracts that we've entered into. And that, that adds another 18 to 20% to the monies that we've budgeted this year. From there, we make our best guess about what other expenses will be. Everything from travel and training, which is a small part of our budget, to gas and oil, which is a larger part of our budget, to supplies, paper, pens. We, like any business, we have all sorts of expenses like that. We make our best guess, and then we move to things that we want to do next year that we have not done in previous years. And this year, there, there's not much. We've accounted for some increases for inflation and things like gas and oil. We've accounted for a small piece of equipment in the street department. We've accounted for the things that are needed for the police department, for the annexed territory. And, and the big thing, the thing that drives the bottom line significantly is we've looked at what our employees are making, Mr. Tolliver, and we've looked at what comparable cities, throwing out the highs and the lows so that we're not dealing with outliers, we've looked at what they're being paid. And we find that to, to pay our employees at a rate that is market competitive, we would have about an additional $1.1 million in the general fund for, for wages and benefits.
Are you even on this, Sistrum?
Alderman Carver?
Pass me one quick. The $1.1 million, are you saying that's a negative or expected finishes?
Let, Alderman Carver, I'll, I'll let her wrap that into it, but let's let her finish, please, okay?
Okay.
Write your questions down. We'll get to you. Promise.
The $1.1 or the increases that it would take to get to a market competitive rate, 90% of that $1.1 million are police and fire. The two departments that we are having the hardest time retaining employees, recruiting employees, that is, that is the big driver for, for all of this. And that is also, they are a core function for the city to provide for the public health, safety, and welfare of, of the city. It, it sprawls into other departments, too. It, it impacts utilities. It impacts sanitation. It touches other departments, too. But, but we're focusing on the general fund right now because that's the one that drives where we set our tax rate. So if you take salaries, contractual adjustment, contractual requirements, the, the increase for salaries, that accounts for between three-fourths and 80% of, of our, of our budget. Those are not what I would call discretionary expenses, but that's, they are, they are what they are. Once we've developed what we think our expenses are, our next task is to figure out what revenues we expect to have next year. And we've done that. The two big drivers in revenues are going to be sales tax, and we budgeted for a significant increase in sales tax this coming year. About a half a million dollars over last year. That's, that's a lot. And frankly, for a couple of us accountants, maybe a little uncomfortable, an uncomfortable address. Because if we miss on that, that means that we don't have the money to, if we miss on our revenue estimates, we don't have the money to cover the expenses that we're budgeting for. We go through line by item, line by line, our other, our other revenues, and we are left with, we need X amount to balance the budget. We project our property taxes based on information that we're given. We project our property taxes based on information that we're given from the county tax assessor. So we know what our assessed values are, we um, we, we project what, what we're gonna collect from property taxes. And the difference is where we start to talk about how do we manage within what we, what we have? Do we need a tax increase? Is there something we can cut in the budget? And so you, you can see that with the size of our budget and with where our, our costs are coming from, if we talk about cutting things, we're talking about cutting people. We're not talking about cutting um, paper and pens. We can't, we can't get, we, we can't balance the budget on, on little things like that. So we're talking about people. Um, where I went wrong in, in presenting this budget to the board is that I'm not a politician. I'm not a politician. And so I approached this as an accountant. We have a gap between what our projected expenses are and what our projected revenues are. How do we close that gap? Well, that gap is a little over eight hundred thousand dollars and that would be two and a half, approaching three mils. And rather than bring a two and a half to three mil increase to, to the board, uh, what we brought was a balanced budget that includes a one mil tax increase, which is about three hundred thousand dollars and about a half a million dollars in unfilled um, positions within the city. We think that, that that is um, also a little uncomfortable if we aren't in fact able to recruit and hire the policemen and firemen that we need to fill positions that we have, have open right now. But, but we do have the ability, if we find that we are successfully recruiting people, we do have the ability to freeze positions and so we may wind up having to freeze some part of that. Um, at Friday's, um, at Friday's work session, one of the things that came up was this idea of the, the COVID mill. And um, I, I, I would like to say that every year's budget stands alone. Every, every year's budget goes through this same process. Every year's budget stands alone. That calculation of the millage required to, to meet the expenses that we're expecting to have is, is, is just a straightforward piece of arithmetic. Um, so we did have a COVID mill increase a couple of years ago. We've subsequently used that mill to buy body cameras for the police department, which was just under three hundred thousand dollars. We used part of it last year for a, a, a pay increase that turned out not to be sufficient in today's market. So we are back this year with another pay increase. Um, that's, that's that piece of it. Another comment that was made Friday is that, and, and that was alluded to tonight, is that there's some squishiness or some room in the budget to, to trim that three hundred thousand dollars that's related to a one mil tax increase. And again, with the size of the budget that we have and the way that our expenses occur, you're talking about people and you're talking about cutting out three hundred thousand dollars worth of people. We've already, we've already accounted for half a million dollars of people costs. Um, and, and I'd, I'd prefer to have a fully staffed police department and fire department and, and not have to worry about the overtime that they're having to work, the, the stress that we're putting on those departments. But, but um, they are a, a, a core function. Um, that's really all I have to say, except that we will be back again next year. We, we can deal with this now. We can take a leap of faith and think that, that it's all gonna come out in the wash um, and, and probably won't, and we'll be back again next year having the same conversation. I, I will say that I've talked to Chief Ballard and I've talked to Chief Yarborough about how long it will take them to staff up because vacant positions does allow us to, to grow into this new salary structure. Um, Chief Ballard has told me that if he can recruit, and he thinks he can recruit certified police officers, he likes to bring them in in groups of four. He can, he can blend those into his staffing, let them get up to speed with how we do things here in the city of Starkville, and he can bring those in every six to eight weeks. So it's feasible, not, not necessarily what will happen, but it is feasible that he could have twelve new police officers um, by, by December. Um, and so that particular piece of squishiness is gone. Chief Yarborough tells me that his is not quite so structured in how he has to bring people in and make sure that it's not interrupting his operations, but that he has people who, um, he has people who are interested in the department. Pay is a big issue for them. Um, but he thinks that he too can staff up to the extent that we can afford to let him staff up fairly quickly. So is there some squishiness in the budget? It's an estimate. Of course, there's gonna be some squishiness in it. Is there eight hundred thousand dollars worth of squishiness in the budget? No. Um, is there half a million that we've budgeted for vacant positions? We, we've got our fingers crossed that, that that's the case. Is there three hundred thousand that we need from this mill of increase in order to be able to, to provide the wages that we need to provide? To, to, to do those most basic of um, city services? That's gonna be for the board to, to make a decision about. And does that cover my requirement?
Mr. Latimer?
You're done.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Alderman Carver, you had a question or did you, did it get answered?
I'm just, no, I've got a lot of questions, a lot of comments come in. Um, first of all, the eight hundred thousand deficit, seems like every year we've got a deficit. What is, what exactly in that eight hundred thousand, what is it this year? Um, we, you know, and I know that our budget is not a church. Um, you know, revenues are down, but expenditures are down with the COVID years and the amount of services we provide. Exactly what are we, uh, where is eight hundred thousand coming from?
Um, and, and I know that we don't typically interact with one another, but, but in, in, for expediency sake, we have, we have an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit that's driven by the one point one million dollars in monies for pay increase and of that one point one million, ninety percent of it, police and fire.
Alderman Carver, another question?
Yes, ma'am. I would, I would disagree with you on something. Uh, I think we have operational issues that's been within the fire department right now. Um, it doesn't matter what you pay people, we had an unemployment today and we can talk about this later, but yeah, upwards of. We have two retirements, that's twenty, we're gonna be short on the fire department. We're having some issues along from pay, uh, pay issues within the fire department. Uh, something we, with another discussion, but no matter how much you pay somebody, as long as we're, we're fixing to lose probably five, six more employees in the fire department. Um, the, the ship has sailed there and y'all know where I sail on that. But um, um, it's kinda, I will credit things in the wrong, but it's kinda like slicing a piece of pie. The pie doesn't have to change shape and size, you can just depend on how you wanna, how you wanna shape it. Um, and then, and I would say that we're coming out of a global pandemic and into a recession and can be very, uh, you said you're not a politician, uh, I'd probably agree with that. I would say that um, but through the make sure of our, that I've, I've got a lot of things on people that I represent and uh, dollars are dollars to them. It's different from maybe you and I that sit on this table. Um, the tax increase is a tax increase. We've gotta find a way to keep that piece of pie the same size and get to slice it differently. Obviously, it's the first meeting of a couple and uh, you know, and I want to say back to Alderman Rupp, you've reached that in a couple of weeks and, and what is the uh, it's not a tax increase, what was the, and I'd be referring to Alderman Rupp, what was that you were saying about maybe starting January first with the tax increase or? What was that proposal? Can you explain that to Ms. Sistrum, to Mr. Rupp?
Alderman Rupp, since he's asking you, I'm presuming you're just talking about delaying the employee raise until January first.
I think, uh, and Mike Brooks can help me with the math, but I think each, if we delayed it, each month we delayed it, that's a hundred thousand dollar savings. So if we didn't institute it October one and made it December one, there's two hundred thousand. Take back the twenty-five thousand to Smart and the twenty-five thousand increase to the library, we're up to a quarter million dollars. That almost covers the mill. So it's philosophically, I think we can find ways to do it completely one hundred support, uh, percent support the raises and, and the need for them. But again, I, I think all of us could probably fix that a little differently. Does that answer your question, Ben?
Alderman Rupp, does that answer, I'm sorry.
Did it, did it, no, no, and I, first of all, I was a real thinking, I'm gonna know I'm doing telephonically, is that? I mean, does that constitute a tax increase in January? Does that mean it's a tax increase in January?
Uh, Ben, if I may.
Yeah, you may, and the answer.
This has nothing to do, this would be not implementing the tax increase. It would be delaying the raise, which I understand is problematic. But I think it's a compromise where we still have it before Christmas and we wouldn't have to do the tax increase and I think we can get where we need to be financially without the tax increase. That's just my opinion. I didn't intend to necessarily stop, I apologize, mayor. Does that answer your question?
Alderman Rupp said.
We'll talk again, it's prob, it's, uh, um, we'll probably talk tomorrow, I'd just try directly get more detail. There's something that is advantageous to me. Um, and I will back up, we always start with maybe with thinking, uh, my sister on for all the work you do because it is a, uh, a labor of love, but I, I appreciate you what you do with the background that you have and, and uh, and finance. But um, there's something this board will always, you know, deal with and something that always does best to try to, you know, manage that budget in the most feasible, economic and efficient way. So I, if y'all, Ms. Sistrum, for what you've done so far and, um, we'll work through this, obviously. But yeah, we've got some operational issues in, in the fire department and the police department. Um, obviously, we know that, uh, you know, personnel is the number one expense we have in the city. We've got some, some fine employees, things we're working through. Um, and I will back up even further and say the last two or three boards expected steps back and really, and, and just think we need to, to recognize that, um, we have done some pay increases. We've done some things to try to, uh, to, um, take care of our employees. So you know, it's never enough, we all know that it's never enough, but um, thank you for what this board has done and previous boards done. Alderman Sistrum, they've especially stepped up and tried to take care of some, uh, paid deficiencies and I thank you for that, for arguing.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Carver. Uh, Alderman Sistrum, you done? Or you have anything to add?
Um, I'd, I'd like to, to say two, two things in response to Alderman Carver's comments. One, one is the idea that we're moving into a recession. Um, when I said that the, a couple of us accountants are um, concerned about the amount that we budgeted for sales tax, that, we hear that recession talk too. And if there, if, if people stop spending money and we stop collecting sales tax at, at the rate that, that we have projected, then we've just dug a little bit bigger hole that we've got to fill, which makes that tax increase even more critical. The other thing I'd like to say is um, I considered and, and, um, and did not bring the idea of delaying the pay increase um, to, to the first quarter of next year, for instance, because we, we are, um, not to put too fine a point to it, but we are hemorrhaging people in, in two of our more critical departments. Um, not only are we losing people because of pay, we find that we have people that who, um, that we are trying to recruit who are not willing to accept a position with us until they find out what we're going to do about pay. So we can, we can delay, we can delay, but I, I do think, um, I do think in my grandmother's best voice, um, that is penny wise, pound foolish. And I, I, I just think we create a much too big a problem for ourselves. Going into a busy season when we're, when, when we're gonna have students back in town, to be understaffed in police and fire is, is not where we want to be. And, and let's not lose sight of the fact too that our employees, just like all of the taxpayers out there, our employees are faced with the same um, stresses, financial stresses that taxpayers are, are facing. I've done the math at my house. A one mil tax increase at my house will cost my husband and me somewhere between fifteen and twenty dollars a year. That's, that's not gonna change our lives in any way. I've gotten from the um, City Clerk, the top ten taxpayers in the city of Starkville um, from two thousand nineteen, when, when we submitted some information for, for bond purposes. And we're talking about places like Lowe's, Haven Twelve, these are big places. Um, and, and for them, you're talking about maybe a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars a year? I, I don't think that's gonna change their operations either. Um, so it is not, taxes, nobody likes taxes. It, it's gotten to be a dirty word, but it is how we pay for local services. And there's, there's a big difference. There's a big difference between the federal budget and the state budget and our city budget. And our city budget is, is our community and we, we don't have to fund it. We don't have to. And we, we see what happens when, when we don't fund it. Streets don't get paved. The, the police doesn't get staffed at the level it needs to be. The fire department um, isn't staffed at the level it needs to be. These are philosophical questions and I swore to Alderman Perkins that I was not gonna talk very long tonight. So I'll just wrap that up and say, this is, this is an important issue. It's not an easy decision. It's not an easy decision. Um, but, but it's an important one.
Thank you, ma'am. Alderman Rupp.
Problem, this term, can I have one more question?
Alderman Carver, Alderman Carver, y'all, let me, let me go down the line first, okay? You've, you've had the floor, so let me go to Alderman Rupp.
Well, I, I think, uh, let me apologize to Alderman Sistrum because I think I coined the term squishy Friday. And uh, at our work session, I, I stomped my feet and pounded it on the table and Mr. Smithman, you were there and I stated my case and I'm not going to relitigate that. I, uh, so, but I do apologize because I turn, I, when I use squishy, I, it was no reflection on you, but having worked with budgets uh, in the mayor's office before, uh, there's just wiggle room. Is that a better?
Squishiness, wiggle room.
So if, if you thought any of that was disparaging, that was not my intent and I apologize for that. That certainly wasn't. Um, but I think I've made, uh, made it clear how I feel about the, the tax increase, so I will yield.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Brooks, anything you'd like to add? He's in Las Vegas.
He's playing blackjack.
Alright, Alderman Brooks. Alright, I'm gonna go on Alderman Bacon.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And we still have a public hearing, everyone, so we'll.
First of all, for those, just for you, just for information purposes, um, our sales tax that we're projecting is a seventeen percent increase, grocery retail sales, year over year from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four. That's probably one of the better, um, if you look across State of Mississippi, if you cross, look across Southeast, you'd probably be hard pressed to find places that are going to increase their retail sales by fifteen to twenty percent in one year. There are a few places, but not many, so that's. So we're, we're in, in an enviable position uh, because of that. Second thing is, um, Alderman, uh, Alderman Sistrum, Budget Chair, I need to mention one thing again about this. We are talking about ending our budget year this year, FY twenty-two, with a two million, four hundred and eleven, five hundred and four dollars of budget surplus, which is the city's supposed to carry in surplus. Um, Ms. Harden, what do we spend between October one and time taxes start coming in? What do we spend to, to float till we get, start getting taxes in? What, are you, do you know what?
At Henry's Payroll, we're at five hundred thousand, seven two.
So we'd spend one point five million easily of that to float us till we start getting replenished with, with, with ABLOM tax, correct?
And we have sales tax.
Right, right. But if anybody's, thinks we're just running up surplus is, we, it's an interesting thing. The State of Mississippi operates on a July one to June thirtieth, um, fiscal year. The federal government operates on an October first, September thirtieth fiscal year. We operate on a federal fiscal, we don't even operate on the same fiscal year as the State of Mississippi. So what happens to us is we have three, October, we have three months after we start our budget year that we have to float our budget and pay the bills before we start getting ABLOM tax, sales, I mean, uh, property tax in. So that's, that's an issue. But what, one of the things that is in the budget, and I'll ask you to explain this to me, and, and, and let me say this too. We're, we're in a budget hearing. I don't think we should rush through to get out of this and I won't be any longer than I have to be to ask the questions I think are important to be asked and asked from my perspective. But I think that, I don't think we should be trying to get through this so we can go somewhere else. I think this is a very important for us to discuss this. somewhere else, I think this is a very important place to discuss this. Uh, we are projecting, and we've talked about this, a cash ending balance, increase of what we project this year of two million four hundred and eleven thousand dollars to two million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, and I know that the zero, that we're zeroing out at the end of the year, at the same time, because of this, it looks like me, we're budgeting a three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar surplus, I mean, the, the, the way budgets have always worked or did, from my, from my past experience is, that you budget even, and then if you save money in your departments, that's how you build your, your cash surplus, that's just the way Mississippi makes us do that, we can't legally budget for a surplus, Mississippi, our municipal, Mississippi cannot do it, state of Mississippi can do that for themselves, they can budget for a three percent rainy day fund, but they won't let us do that, that's just the way it works, the way it works, but tell me on that, because that's basically a mill, in other words, if we, if we, if we keep our, if we budget for our cash ending balance to remain at two million four hundred thousand dollars, we basically, we, we cover that, that mill, that three hundred thousand or so dollars, which is a mill increase, bring employees on with the pay increases in, in October, we just won't grow our, our cash ending balance, or we won't at least show on paper starting the, the budget year that we would be doing that, would you, can you address that for me a little?
I, I'd be glad to, thank you. Um, the, the ending fund balance, the beginning fund balances are, um, an accounting construct, we, they're, they are, um, the ending fund balance particularly is, is where we balance our, our budget each, each year as we go through making, uh, various changes. Um, we are budgeting a two point seven five million dollar ending fund balance, which is roughly ten percent of our operating budget. Um, our, our accountant would tell us that we need to be somewhere between eight and twelve percent, and, um, I, when we go out to borrow money in the market, that's one of the things that they look at, they, they also look at, um, and, and they'd like to see a much higher number, they would like to see us having thirty to forty percent in an ending fund balance, which is not feasible in, in the state of Mississippi. Um, they also look at what changes have occurred in the, in the fund balance from year to year, is it growing a little bit, is it decreasing, is it staying the same, and so that's, that's a, one of those financial health, um, issues that, that the financial market looks at us with. Um, I will say that there was a time, um, the, the mayor and I maybe have a little different opinion about how much of an ending fund balance one ought to keep, but, um, I will say that there was a time just before I came onto the board the very first time, that, and, and the vice mayor alluded to this last Friday, that, at, there have been times when the city's ending fund balance dropped down to a half a million dollars. There was a time just before I came onto the board, that the city of Starkville was looking at having to borrow money to make payroll, to make payroll, um, because of the way our cash comes and goes throughout the year. I will say, um, Alderman Beatty, that how much we spend from October one to December thirty-first, that, that lean period before property taxes start coming back in large chunks, um, can, can vary, but, but it, it, it will hover, um, around a million and a half to two million dollars, um, that, that we will, will spend, a lot depends on the timing of the number of payrolls, um, anything that comes up that's out of the ordinary, and, um, so I, I think you, you wanna keep a healthy fund balance, you, you want to, um, to the extent that you can grow it, and it, we'll never be able to double it year to year, in, in Mississippi, it just doesn't happen, but I think, I, I, I'm reluctant to use the ending fund balance as a way to, to balance the budget.
Can, can we budget for that increase though?
Yes.
We can budget for a fund, fund balance increase?
We can budget our fund balance at whatever we want our fund balance to be.
Well, no, we can't, we're not supposed to, that thing, there's, there's, there's budget to zero out and, and, uh, and then we're just, a good money manager, then we accumulate three hundred thousand more dollars?
Um.
I mean, I didn't know, I just thought we had, it had to be, I think they could budget for surplus.
The only reason, the only reason, from a budgetary perspective, what I've been explained to in the past, or what's been explained to me in the past, is that the only reason we even budget an ending fund balance, we don't budget it to spend it, we budget it in case we have to spend it, so, um, it, it, and Janet Baird at Extension told me that, um, years and years ago, that, um, that's the only reason that we budget a beginning balance and an ending balance, and so what we try to do is make sure those numbers are the same, and we are therefore not blowing through, um, that one time money that has built up over, over the hundred and seventy years that Starkville is old, so.
I, I think it would be, that, that I don't advise mention before about the freezes on our, on our employees, but, but part of the, the reason that we can do, um, what we're gonna do in this budget, this upcoming budget year, we've frozen out how many positions?
The, a half a million dollars, and, and that's gonna be roughly ten, ten positions.
Yeah, we, we don't freeze those positions, we, we are actively trying to hire people in twenty-three, we, we five hundred thousand dollars more in the, in the.
Mm-hmm, if, if we're able to, if we're able to meet that, yes.
I, yeah.
Thank you. Alderman Brooks is now with us, I believe, Alderman Brooks?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, yeah.
That's okay.
I heard you guys say, I'm in Las Vegas, I'm depending with my.
We're just, we're outing you.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, just a few comments, I, I, I know we have another hearing, and I'll be a lot better prepared, I'll have more information in front of me, so that I can discuss this, what, um, going back to what Alderman Carver asked earlier, um, the, uh, the total raises are somewhere in the name of, I think it was one million seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, what, what, uh, and I asked Alderman Sistrum for the cover of, uh, five, just to make sure that I had the right number, it's what's been, uh, added to the budget, that's the budget addition, so that's where Alderman Rupp was coming from about delaying the pay rates two months, and take that, one million seven fifty-four divided by twelve times three, a hundred and forty-six times two is two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, you know, uh, which is essentially the mill that we're looking for, and, and that, uh, you know, just to delay it until December one, um, takes care of the, of the, uh, of the mill that we're asking for, uh, the, the other thing that, and again, I, I, I'll try to give you more, more detail on some of these numbers at the next meeting, but just looking through the information that, uh, that may have come to me, we've been looking at twelve licenses in the fire department, uh, the, the fifteen by the, the, the police department, and we're, uh, maybe we'll add seven new positions, um, if, you know, if we, then again, if we get the, the twelve by December, um, if, when I, I think that's probably the best case scenario, then we're, we're still short, but, but these are, these are positions that are, um, budgeted for, you know, that they're in, they're accounted for in the budget, and same with the twelve fire, fire department guy, as I haven't gone up, and, you know, that's in, uh, in excess of four and five thousand dollars that, uh, we, we have in our budget that odds are, we're not, we're not gonna fill, that, that's, uh, you know, some of the, uh, some of the numbers that, you know, just looks to me like we, we got some from, um, from unknown here in the, in the budget with, with, uh, with both the raise, the ranges, and, and again, I'm, I'm all for the raise, we, we gotta help, police gotta help our, our department personnel, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not certain that if, you know, if you're trying to hire, hire the guys and, and, you know, you tell them, okay, we, we will have a raise starting December one, I'm, I'm, I'm not so sure that that wouldn't, wouldn't, uh, you know, have an impact with, I, I, I think for you, it's covered, uh, you know, but, but delaying it too much will, that, you know, probably save some having, having this, uh, tax increase, but, but again, I, I don't, I'm, um, I'm, I'm a little read it with what I can, uh, pump out as far as these numbers, uh, given that situation not being there, and so I'll try to expand on this a little bit more during the next meeting, but I would like, would like the board just to, to, uh, maybe, uh, dig in with that a little bit, look at the raise, look at the, the, the total numbers, um, and, um, make it possibly, uh, you know, taking into consideration maybe we're just delaying a couple of months, uh, still be enough for Christmas as Alderman Rupp has, has said, and, and, um, like, and save us from having to, to raise this, one day of tax, I yield, mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor, pardon?
No comment, thank you.
Alderman gone?
No comment, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, I am gonna make a quick comment myself, and then I'll open it up as a public hearing. One of the things that I would like us to do, because I truly believe the longer we delay, the more difficult it comes for us to, um, attract employees, um, I think they are looking at it, I don't want us to lose any more employees, and I don't want us to be unable to attract them as we're strongly going through trying to bring people in and, and recruit both fire, police, and every other position we've got for that matter, because we do have gaps in other, in other areas, and, uh, Mr. Prater is no longer here, but I do want to say that, um, for the city of Starkville, we have one of the lowest tax rates in the state for a city our size, we are the fifth lowest, and the only ones who are lower than we are have enormous amounts of sales tax that they have generated and gambling, you know, if you're down on the coast, and then you've got Flowood and, um, Pearl, so, and they've got big malls and discount stores and all that sort of business, so we really are very frugal with what we do, I think our department heads have been extraordinarily good at what they do, and I am regularly amazed by how they operate, I can remember when we, and, and Vice Mayor will call you out on this, I can remember when I was a C A O, he would say we drive until wheels fall off, well, and that's, I understand what he meant, but we really don't wanna drive our vehicles till the wheels, wheels fall off, because then we find ourselves with, uh, a lack of pride in our community, a lack of pride from our employees and what they're functioning with, and an inability or lesser ability to meet the, um, obligations of their jobs, so, um, those are the kinds of things that I don't think we want to do and be known for, thank you very much, um, we are doing our best to be the best we can be, and I truly believe that we have stepped our game up, and I believe that is in large part, um, from our employees, from our department heads, and through our understanding that to do good things is not a totally inexpensive process, we have done a number of, uh, incredible things to make Starkville the best she can be, and I think we see those results. I don't think that, um, we are beyond the pale when it comes to our tax rate, again, we are the fifth lowest in the state for a community of our size, and so, um, I'm very proud of what we've done, and, you know, while I, I don't want a tax increase any more than anybody else out there, because I have a number of commercial properties that pay at a fifteen percent rate, not the ten percent rate of a residence, and I understand that, but, um, I do think the things that we've achieved and the things that our, uh, city has been doing, um, shows the value that we are trying to bring into the community, and part of that comes from that tax increase, uh, and, and bringing in good people, so I will stop it with that, and now I will open it as a public hearing, and we'll come back to the board if there are any other further comments that want to be made, so opening it as a public hearing, this is our public hearing on the, first public hearing on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget and potential tax mileage for the city of Starkville.
Hello, good evening, uh, my name is Alan Turner, um, I think that we can kind of dial back in, uh, what makes taxpayer, it's kind of upset that we pay taxes and, uh, we have parks and stuff that's in need and nothing is done, and, uh, people take that kind of serious, that, um, we paying taxes and we cannot see what our taxes are paying for, and with the, with the opponent department, that, you know, we don't need to stress our police out, or it's hard to run a criminal down, or tell him he got to remain silent, then he won't resist, or, uh, that's a lot of stress on a police officer, or, uh, uh, if, and if a house is burning down, they, they do the best to try to get there, but there are a lot of stress, it's what takes a toll on people that they expect us to do all this at this money, that, uh, if we can cut stress, if we can start bringing things up the cove before it get embarrassed, it'll help and make the taxpayers feel better.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, anyone else?
Good evening, mayor, no more? Emmett Smithman, I am now in Ward Two.
Oh. Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, uh, just a little, I just wanted to go back to a little bit of history tonight, and I, I wanna deal with, uh, abalone taxes and sales tax, and, uh, just looking back, uh, over the last five years was taking place, I, I think we've got plenty of money to do a lot of things, and I think if we do it right, we can do some, we can really do some good things, but look, looking over the last five years, we've, we've added five point five five meals, if we go, if we add the one mill this year, we'll add five point five five meals over the last five years, that, that represent a twenty-one point seven percent increase, if you look back at the beginning of that period of time, twenty, twenty-one point seven percent increase on mileage, now, uh, I agree with the mayor, our mileage rate is very reasonable, but it's reasonable because our praise values in this community is so much higher, uh, a mill in Columbus raises a hundred and ninety-five thousand, and a mill in Starkville raises three hundred and two thousand, come on now, let's, 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 let's double the mileage so we balance Columbus, I see what I'm saying? It, it's, it's a factor of two functions, so you gotta keep that in mind, uh, give you an idea, a va, a value of a mill over the last five years, a value of a mill is up twenty-eight point eight percent, that just says that we're doing, we're growing, our praise values are higher, when you get reappraised, the value, the value of a mill goes up, and if we grow it, it goes up, so, what, that combination now, we're collecting fifty-six point seven percent more today than we were collecting five years ago, three point four billion dollars a year in abalone taxes, than we were collecting five years ago, let's look at how we spinning this, uh, so, but, you know, if we look at, uh, sales tax, we'll, the sales point, uh, abalone and sales tax, sixty-five to seventy percent of our revenue, that's where the money comes from, it's a tremendous amount of money, uh, sales tax, tremendous, tremendous growth, which is, uh, even, even in, even during the pandemic was very successful, had a slight decrease, but I'm sure, uh, internet sales and all is happening tremendously, uh, right now, you know, right now, this year, we budget eight point one million dollars, okay, through nine months now, we already collected seven point six, got three more months, I believe we're gonna have about eight hundred thousand dollars extra this year, has anybody accounted for that? What are we gonna do with that eight hundred thousand dollars? Three more months, got eight point one million dollars we've funded, through nine months, seven point six we've collected, three more months of sales tax, money's gonna come in, a lot of dollars coming in, so, so what's gonna happen in the future? Uh, you know, we, we, we growing our sales tax by eight hundred thousand a year, the last couple of years, uh, that, that represents about a nine point seven percent increase, right, so, so we count a lot of dollars, the two things we have, I don't know, I, I know we don't have a revenue problem at all, we may have a, a spending problem, and how we spend it, how we allocate it, how we budget it, we, 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 we increased our revenues tremendously, and, uh, and that is what's concerned, that, I, I don't know, I don't, not sure, ending fund balance, uh, two point seven five million, come on guys, the state of Mississippi don't even allow that, state of Mississippi says that you can, uh, budget the ending fund balance a couple of those three months, Mr. Beatty, we can, but we can do that, uh, we don't even have to do that, we can, we can borrow the funds if we need to, if we had to, but keep in mind, we got sales tax coming in every month, it's gonna cover seventy-five percent of that, we got, we got a couple million dollars, we do something, we, guys, we don't need it, we can go, state law lets us borrow it, if we need, if we have to have it, we can borrow it, if an emergency happens, we can borrow that money and budget it out the next few years, we can do those kind of things, so, uh, I, I, I just challenge you to take a hard look at how we doing things, how we spend it, take a look at the money, I think what have money left over this year looks like, uh, a bit of money looks like, so, uh, I, I just challenge, and that, that's coming off the current final statement, Mr. Sistrum, so I'm, I'm reading off of that, so, I got it soon, there's three more months of sales tax coming in, uh, so, uh, so, a lot of dollars there, but that, that was just some of the things I just wanna get off the chair, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, Mr. Smithman, anyone else? Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close it as a public hearing, and further discussion from the board. Alderman Carver, you had something else you wanted to say or inquire about?
Two things, one is for Mr. Brooks to comment. We're not down, from what I was told, we just got another resignation in the fire department, we're down eighteen with two fourths coming retirement, so we're down two zero twenty. We're going to be down twenty firemen. I don't mind being, you know, an Alderman one, if standing out there at each time to hit the panic button within the fire department, we've got issues, we've got a saw there. And then secondly, I always like to ask this for Alderman Sistrung, if you talk about how tax increase affects, like you said for your home, but for every hundred thousand set value, I know it is a small amount, how much are you talking for?
Ten dollars.
How did you come up with your own?
One, one mill, ten dollars per hundred thousand dollars of true value, which is a number assigned by the tax assessor. I've said this before, and I'll say it again, there are not many of us here in this room who would sell our house for what we're on the books for with the tax assessor as a true value. So my house is, and vacant lot, are going to be on the tax assessor's rolls at, with a true value of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I would not sell you my house and vacant lot for anything approaching, I mean, it would take a lot more than that for me to sell you my house and vacant lot. That's multiplied by ten percent because I have a tax, a homestead exemption, and then one mill times that, divide by a thousand, because mill means one one thousand, and that's seventeen fifty is my estimated impact to me, which is nothing in the, you know, across the course of a year. And I'm a senior citizen on a fixed income, so I can, I think we can manage to absorb that in our, in our life. The, that's where the number comes from, so it's ten dollars per hundred thousand dollars of true value for a home with homestead exemption. If you're sixty-five or older or disabled, you get a little extra break. If you have commercial property, it's taxed at fifteen percent of the true value as opposed to ten percent, so.
Alderman Carver, anything else?
No, ma'am, just a mill or now, three oh five, three oh eight, wasn't there?
Three oh five, I think is the last word I heard, was roughly.
Roughly.
Three oh five thousand dollars, roughly.
Okay, again, I would think Alderman Sistrung, I sit beside you, thanks for all that you do.
Okay, thank you.
It's a team effort, we're all in this, so.
All right, anyone else? Anyone else? Alderman Beatty?
Our, if anybody drew around Starkville, you'll notice that we don't, we struggle to pave our streets right now. And if you go looking in, not just other communities in Mississippi, but get outside of Mississippi, you look at cities, you go Florence, Alabama, you go to Auburn, Alabama, you go over to Fayetteville, Arkansas, places like that, I don't know what it is, I do too. Those states are sales tax-driven states. Every state around us allows local cities and counties to set and collect their own sales tax. And so, and Alabama, sales tax rates over there are nine, ten percent. Alabama has a five percent state sales tax, rest of that's local sales tax that county and city are collecting. So when Alabama's Avalon tax rates are lower, and Arkansas's Avalon tax rate, everybody talks about how expensive Tennessee's taxes are compared by, compared to ours. You go up there and compare a hardware store in Ballarat, Tennessee to Carrington, Mississippi, and see who's, we pay higher property taxes down here, we do. But it's because of this tax structure here, we are, I don't say we're property tax driven, but we have to depend more on Avalon tax in state of Mississippi because we're not given the flexibility to be able to set local sales tax rates like our neighboring states are around us. I just, I hate to see us have substandard streets. I hate to see us not be able to pay competitively what it would cost for to bring our fire and policemen up to where we can train and keep people, you know, qualified, certified police officers and firemen, and not just train them to go somewhere else after a couple of years. It takes money to do that. I've been through the budget, I mean, I don't know where the wiggle room is. I will say this again, I don't think anybody's, I don't want anybody's even ask a question about this, but if we budget for the same ending cash balance as last year, two point four one one million dollars, instead of two point seven five million dollars for cash in balance, that is the one mill, and we can take that off the table and still do the things that we, that we plan to do in our proposed FY23 budget without, without having to do the mill increase. If we just don't budget for that three hundred and forty thousand dollar Avalon tax increase from two hundred, two point four one one to two point seven five million. So even though that may not be the most advantageous way, you know, is our, Alderman Sistrung, is our cashing the balance, did it go down this year? Or has it been at about two point four?
It, it.
Did it decrease?
No, it didn't, it didn't decrease, and it's stayed in a fairly narrow band over the last several years.
So if we were to work our numbers where it stays at two point four, two point four one, something like that, then the one mill we plug in can come out and we still bounce the budget to, with cash balance of two point four one million, correct?
It, that will on paper balance it.
I mean.
And if, and if I could say that the two short-sighted pieces of doing it that way is that we're planning to issue bonds for paving streets, and we may wind up paying extra interest because, because of that, because they will look, and they will look at what's been happening with our, with our fund balance. And the other is that's a one-time use of money, and we're going to have salaries again next year. So be prepared, be prepared for where you're going to, where you're going to do that next year.
But it would be an option.
It's, everything's an option.
It would be an option.
Everything's an option.
And, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, that concludes the public hearing on the budget and discussion of tax millage increase for this time. We will be bringing it up on the sixteenth yet again. Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of the downtown Main Street redevelopment and redesign plan. It's presented by Kim Lee Horn in our work session in some depth, and that's also available on the Facebook, our Facebook website, our Facebook page. And they have a summary of proposed modifications that I believe is on our, in our e-pack, and we have Owen Harris here, if anyone has any questions of him. So from the, from that standpoint, do we have any, do you have anything you wish to add to what we had fairly thorough discussion on? We have a big work session on Friday. None, okay, we'll see if there are any questions. Let's just hang on for a second. I'm sorry, did I hear? Alderman Vaughn? Mupu? I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn for approval of the consideration of the downtown Main Street redevelopment and redesign plan as presented by Kim Lee Horn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Alderman Rupp. All right, any further discussion? Any discussion? Alderman Carver, any discussion?
No, ma'am.
All right. Alderman Sistrung, anything?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Rupp?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
We just got to be concerned where we're taking our generation for the next ten years, and I think we're making a good move.
Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. All right, then in that case, if you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, vote being six to one, it passes, so thank you, everyone. Next item is the claim socket. I have a motion for a claim socket.
Sub move.
This is a motion for Alderman.
We have a vote.
That's a second. Alderman Carver, I'm going to give that as a second from you, is that, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. If you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks. Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, that motion carries as well, and that takes us to the end of our agenda for this first meeting in the Board of, of the Board of Alderman for the city of Starkville for August. Let me read that there will be a work session of the mayor and board of Alderman on Friday, August twelfth, 2022. It'll be at eleven AM Starkville City Hall, located at one ten West Main Street on Second Florida Conference Room. The public and media are invited to attend. It will be posted within one hour of the conclusion of this meeting, and we will look forward to seeing everyone. We'll be discussing the agenda as well as we'll have a presentation on parks. So thank you, everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn, sorry, to recess?
Sub move.
A motion for Alderman Rupp to recess, a second from Alderman Vaughn. Please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, we are in recess. Thank you, everyone, appreciate it, have a great week.